It is 5:30. I'll call the Record City Council meeting to order. We have a pretty robust agenda tonight, but the first agenda is about a young man, and I'm going to say it from up here so I can get on the microphones if we get recorded. And we're going to bring him up front in recognizing. In our midst today, I think, is a real hero. Tell you a little bit about his name is Kason Prince. He's from Huckabee, Texas, and one of the good parts about being mayor is getting to do some things like this, recognize people who deserve to be recognized. And he is, we have some great people that live in our community. And there was a time when he heard about children not having food over the weekends, and he said that he had plenty of food to eat, and he couldn't imagine other kids not being able to eat. And so he took that on as a challenge, and he has, he looked in his pockets, gave the money he could to a program called Backpack Buddies. He's taken that on as a mission individually. He's 11 years old, he's a sixth grader, so I think everybody on this council and people in the community can take this as an example. Since March 31st, 2017, Kason has raised and donated, this now, if this number is correct, $36,309.63 to Backpack Buddy. That's probably the largest contributor in Steevenville, Texas, I would imagine. It's a great program. He's done things like t-shirt sales, bake sales, et cetera, every year to raise this money. And so he's here today, and we want to recognize him, so Kason, I'll come up here and put my mask back on. Yes, sir, right near front. Sir, if I could see. By the way, you want to introduce who you have here with you tonight?
Uh, I have my mother, JJ, who's always been by my side. She's always believed in me, even when I didn't believe in myself. I have my dad, who always, he's the funnest and always gets us a little trapped up. And then I have JJ's colleague, Stephanie. She always helps me out and came to support me tonight, so I have to thank her. And that is about it, but I also have to thank all the family that's not mayor. They've guided me through this life I've had, and it's been a bop one.
Well, I can tell you, everybody here tonight that's parents hopes their kids turn out to be as good a kid as you are.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate everything that you've done for Steevenville, Texas, and Backpack Buddies. And I have a certificate of recognition here. It says, "For selfless efforts in raising over $36,000 on behalf of Backpack Buddies of E. Raph County. Awarded this 5th day of January 2021 on behalf of the City Council of the City of Steevenville, Texas." So here's your certificate. Don't run out to the good people with the pictures. And we have some items here, one of them is really important, sanitation.
Yes.
Hand sanitizer. Now, I told you earlier that we're giving a key to the city. It doesn't really fit any doors in the city hall, so you don't have to worry about getting in or anything like that, but here I want to present you with a city key. We don't give this out very often. We give it to heroes, and you're one of those heroes. I appreciate it very much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for all the stuff you've done. The certificate's in all the papers around here as well. Thank you for all that you've done for Backpack Buddy.
Good morning.
Good job, please.
Good job. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, don't forget your stump.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. That's really cool. That's the fun part about being up here, isn't it? Recognize people like that, do such a good job. Next item is we're going to enter into a public hearing. The City of Steevenville intends to submit an application for the Texas Department of Agriculture for a Texas Community Development Block Grant for downtown revitalization. I'm going to turn it over to staff to make a report.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you. That's probably the hardest presentation I've ever had to follow, so. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is twofold. The first part, it is for two grant applications, both from the Texas Department of Agriculture. One is known as the Community Development portion of the CDVG, or Community Development Block Grant. The second one is a Main Street application from the same Community Development Block Grant program. What we're asking for this evening is, well, the public hearing is to allow for input on those two projects, but you're hearing about this now at the council meeting rather than a committee meeting because we need to make the deadline for the application. Part of the scoring for the application includes the public hearing, and in order to be competitive, because we've received these grants in the past, at least the community development one, we need to be competitive and get all the points that we possibly can. What I would recommend is that we discuss the project scope at the January 19th Public Works Committee meeting, that we can scope out those projects. What we're looking for this evening is a resolution to award a contract to public management for both of these grant applications. This is what I would refer to as a no-risk grant application contract because the city does not pay anything to public management unless there is a grant awarded. A project is accepted, and it is paid for with grant funding to public management. If there is not a grant awarded, then the contract will terminate. Be glad to answer any questions you have about those two grant applications.
Questions? Before we enter the public hearing, Randy, we have to have two different votes?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Nick? Okay, then we're going to enter in a public hearing and ask if anybody in the public would like to come back, a comment for or against the proposal tonight? Yes, sir. Would you state your name and your address?
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. My name's Arnold Ramming, address 2319 West Nanomosa Lane. Lived here in Steevenville for six and a half years. Prior to that, lived in Bakersfield, California, where I was the superintendent overseeing the city's Public Works Capital Improvement Program projects. Through those projects for 20 years, I worked on several community development, block grant funded projects, and I saw the wonderful things that those projects can do for the community. I don't have any experience with the Main Street project funding, but I'm sure it would do similar wonderful things. So I strongly encourage you to file your resolution, pass your resolution, and authorize your staff to apply for these grants. It'll be wonderful things for the city. Thank you.
You may have any questions? Thanks, sir. I'd sure give Nick your name and contact information. He might need your assistance someday. I'm sure we have a committee we can put you on somewhere to help us out with that. And we're always looking for, here's the, the general right here will be looking for a nomination on a committee before too long. I promise you that.
So as I understand, in February, you'll be looking for specific project ideas?
Yes, sir.
I will, I've got some in mind. Be glad to come back.
Super, we appreciate your assistance.
Thank you.
I think we met once before at a bank event.
We may have.
I think it was fundraiser for a politician. I think we ran into each other, but thank you for coming to make your presentation. Anybody else from the public? Hearing now will close the public hearing and ask if we have motions. Our attorney said we need to have two separate motions.
Mayor, I move that we approve the resolution designating Public Management Inc. as a grant administrator for the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program Community Development Fund.
Have a motion as second, motion by Justin, and a second by Alan. Any further discussion? Proceed to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Resolution approved. Next item is approval of a resolution designating Public Management Inc. as the grant administrator. Can I hear a motion?
Mayor, I approve for the approval of the resolution designating Public Management Inc. as the grant administrator for the Texas Community Development Block Grant Downtown Revitalization Main Street Program Community Development Fund.
Second.
Motion by Justice, second by.
Gerald.
Okay. Any further discussion? Proceed to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Got our approval of both resolutions. Thank you. We'll go into our presentations for committees. Planning and Zoning Development Committee, Mr. Keelen, are you going to come make a presentation?
Oh, Mayor, Mr. Mayor and City Council, we have four cases for you tonight. First case would be, thank you, public hearing, case number RZ 2020-012. Applicant Mark Pace is requesting a rezoning of property at 1601 Swan, Lot 7 and 8, Block 7, of the South Side addition to the City of Steevenville, E. Raph, Texas, from industrial to multifamily. The current land use is industrial with future land use being multifamily. It is served by city water main and has a 6-inch sanitary sewer that traverses the property. This property is in relation to a project at 422 South Lilian. That project was presented in November and approved by council in December. And these properties will be in conjunction to that particular property. Mr. Pace desires to build townhomes on the property. And if we look at the maps on the second page of the, sorry. Catch up here. I pushed everybody.
There you go.
Sorry about that. So Mr. Pace did apply for rezoning for 422 South Lilian in November. That was heard by P&amp;Z and recommended for approval to council and subsequently approved. There were two properties that were not considered, and these will be in relation to that same project. So the Planning and Zoning Commission convened on December 16th, and by unanimous vote of six to zero, recommended the city council approve the request with the condition that the railroad be informed of all procedural issues that may or may not affect them. That was a condition placed on the recommendation was based on input from Mr. Bill Parker with the railroad. We are asking for your consideration.
Any questions for Steve?
I'm assuming Bill Parker is the representative of authorized represented on behalf of the railroad.
He's out of the port. Any other questions? Hearing now will enter into a public hearing on case number RZ 2020-012. Is anyone who'd like to come and speak in favor of the project? Anybody who wants to speak in opposition to the project? Hearing now will close the public hearing and consider approval of the ordinance. You may have a motion?
Mayor, I make the approval ordinance.
2020. Or is it 2020?
01, as presented. Second.
Motion by Brady, a second by Ricky. Any further discussion? Proceed to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes. Next item.
Next case is RZ 2020-013, related to the earlier property. This is at 1601, or I'm sorry, 1600 Swan, part of Lot 5, Lot 14, South Side addition to the City of Steevenville, E. Raph County, Texas. Again, the request is to change from industrial to R3 multifamily. This is the same applicant, Mr. Pace, for the project in relation to 422 South Lilian. Current land use for this property is industrial with future land use being commercial. It is also served by 12-inch city water main in Swan and has a 6-inch sanitary sewer that traverses the property. The Planning and Zoning Commission, again, met on December 16th, and with the unanimous vote of six to oh, recommended the city council approve the request with the condition that the railroad be informed of all procedural issues that may or may not affect them. If approved, this project in relation to 422 South Lilian will remove some mobile homes that are in the area from current mobile home parks.
Any questions for Steve? Hearing now will enter into a public hearing in case RZ 2020-013. Anybody speak in favor of the project? Anybody speaking in opposition? Hearing now will close the public hearing and move to a consideration. We have a motion?
Mayor, approve. Make the motion, we approve ordinance 2021-002, rezoning 1600 West Swan to multifamily residential issue.
Second.
Have a motion as second by Gerald, Ricky, and then Gerald seconded. Any further discussion? Proceed to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes. Next item, RZ 2020-014.
Yes, sir. Applicant Huang Wang is requesting a rezon of properties located at 1125 South Alexander, being A0196 of the Dupuy John D. to the City of Steevenville, E. Raph County, Texas, from R1 single-family to R3 multifamily. This property is currently zoned as single-family with future land use also being single-family. This property has a 16-inch city water main in Alexander, but is not currently served by sanitary sewer. This applicant bought the property recently and had intentions to use the property, the single-family home on the property for a single-family residence, and then to build a multifamily structure on the backside of the property. We asked that the applicant come in and meet with staff, and we talked to them about the intended project, including access, setback requirements, demolition of accessory structures, et cetera. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard the case on December 16th. Three people spoke in opposition, and one citizen submitted a letter of opposition. I believe that letter has also been submitted for tonight. The commission recommended the city council deny the request by vote of five to zero to one with one member abstaining.
Anybody have questions for Steve? We do have, we're going to enter into a public hearing now. We do have, one person wants to come and speak, but also just want to make note that all the council got an email tonight that was forwarded to us by Stacy from a citizen who is speaking in opposition as well. So I don't guess, Stacy, we don't have to read this one, do we? Do we just, I just want to make sure everybody knows that?
No.
Oh, since it was not here tonight?
You can, but you don't have to.
Okay, well, we all have it, y'all have seen it, so we know what that recommendation was. All right, we have, we're entering a public hearing, and I have one person, Brian Leslie. There you go. State your name and your address, and you've got three minutes.
Brian Leslie, 1141 Greens Creek Circle, Steevenville, Texas. The property is, I wish that council would oppose this, and the reason for it is that the property is a unique piece of property that if it was to be rezoned to multifamily and they continue with the apartments or residential structures that they're wanting to, the setbacks and everything would not permit enough room for multifamily, and then the rest of the driveway and everything else would be too narrow and small, and then you've got traffic hazard right there with the speed limit change and another residential neighborhood dumping out at that one spot. Plus, the traffic coming in and out of there would be putting headlights into my house at night as tenants would be coming and going, and that's kind of why I'm opposed to it at this point.
Anybody have any questions for Brian? Thank you, sir, for coming.
Thank you.
I'll, since that was in opposition, I'll ask, anybody else want to speak in opposition to the project? So we have one ex-councilmember who sent us all an email tonight about his opposition. Hearing now, does anybody want to speak in favor of the project? We're going to close public hearing then and proceed. Is there a recommendation from council?
I make a motion that we uphold P&amp;Z's standing and deny the request of RZ 2020-03.
Second.
Do you have a motion by Brandon and second by Ricky, is that right? Oh, by Nick, I'm sorry. Just heard out of this ear, and that's my bad ear. To disapprove their request. Any further discussion? Proceed to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion to deny that. Is that the right way to say it?
Yeah, that's right.
Next one, public, next item.
Next item is case number RZ 2020-015. Applicant Gary Lloyd is requesting a rezon of properties located at 2612 West Lingleville Road, Lot 1, Block 1, of the Latour addition to the City of Steevenville, E. Raph County, Texas, from B1 neighborhood business to B2 retail and commercial business. Current land use is B1, future land use is commercial. It is served by 8-inch city water main in the Lingleville Highway. It is not currently served by a sanitary sewer, but it does have an onsite sewage system. The applicant did not express the purpose of the rezon request on his application. However, in a subsequent conversation, the applicant indicated that the business model would include a covered parking facility. On December 16th, the Planning and Zoning Commission convened, and by unanimous vote of six to zero, recommended the city council approve the rezoning request.
Anybody have any questions for Steve?
Is, help my memory, please. Property lot that is not served by sewer, is it acceptable for them to use a private system if it's under a certain size? Is it under an acreage, or I can't remember?
That question actually came up today during our review, and we believe it's a one-acre minimum requirement. Mr. Williams was able to do some research, and he found that a variance was approved for that property for a smaller lot size for that onsite system.
That was just a few years ago, too.
Yeah, a couple of years ago.
Came for council.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Other questions? We're entering a public hearing. Anybody want to come speak in favor of the project? Anyone else speak in opposition to the project? Hearing now will close the public hearing and proceed for consideration. Anybody have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve case number RZ 2020-04.
It's ordinance number 2021.
Ordinance number 2021-03.
Nick makes a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Ricky makes second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, Steve. Anything else you want to discuss off the agenda?
Includes our presentation.
Thank you, sir. You have the Parks and Recreation Services Committee, Mr. N. Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. On December 15th, the Parks and Major Services Committee met to discuss proposed window replacement at the Rec Hall. Since then, we do have a firm cost estimate that's come in at $130,566. This is a budgeted item, correct? And this does come to council with a recommendation of approval from the committee. If there are no questions, I'd be glad to make that in the form of a motion.
Okay, we have Nick makes a motion.
I'd like to.
Have a second from Mr.? Okay, Alan, give me the motion, or the second. Discussion. Proceed to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes. Anything else you're?
No, sir, that completes my report.
Thank you, sir. Personnel Committee, Mr. Thurman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Personnel Committee met this afternoon at 4:30 to discuss approval of the resolution authorizing COVID-19-related sick leave. The Families First Coronavirus Response Act expired, which is a federal act, expired December 31st, and that act required an additional 80 hours of COVID-related sick leave, as well as an expanded family and medical leave provision. Our HR attorney, Ms. Betty Lynn, was on the call with us today to answer some questions about what we could do or what we could and could not do. After some discussion, the committee brings with a positive recommendation to extend the provisions of FF-CRA until March 31st, 2021. That would bring that to a full calendar year for when that act went into effect. And to clarify that that is an extension of those provisions, it does not provide any expansion or any additional hours and does not reset any already used hours by employees under that act. So I would make that in the form of, I would make that recommendation in the form of a motion.
Ricky makes a motion, and Nick seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes.
Concludes my report.
Mr. Nix, Public Works Committee.
Mayor, the Public Works Committee met on the 15th of December to discuss the possibility for reactivating two positions that have been frozen, the construction supervisor and construction technician. This freeze was intended to be temporary for the opportunity for us to hire an outside consultant to be the resident project representative to oversee the construction of the Eastside Sewer Lift Station. That project has been completed. It has been accepted by the city, and it was the recommendation of staff, and it is the recommendation of the council, that we reactivate these two positions, considering that the funding is available to fund both of these from the existing rate structure that we adopted at the first of the year. And I would make the motion to reactivate the construction supervisor position and construction technician position back into the budget and put them back into service doing their normal jobs.
Second.
And a motion by Alan and seconded by Nick. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Mr. City Manager, can you make a requirement that the current public works director start going home before 11 o'clock?
I'll do my best, sir.
Okay. Further discussion?
Go home.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion opposed, I mean, all opposed? Motion passes.
That concludes my report, Mayor.
Chris Cook, Nomination Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The nomination committee met on December the 15th and we reviewed the different boards and commissions that we have and, and the applicants that we had to fill those positions that were open. And we interviewed one person, Rita Cook, in that evening. The others had been interviewed in June. And we, and I'll go ahead if you would, we made the following recommendations to the council. For the Board of Adjustment, to reappoint Jeanette Cochran to place five, reappoint Adam Cash to alternate number one, move Darrell Brown to, from alternate three to place one, and David Basket from alternate two to place three. That's the Board of Adjustment. We would recommend that and make that in the form of a motion.
Okay. We have a motion by Gerald.
Second.
I have a second by Ricky. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed?
Mayor, can we act on the balance of these with a single motion or do we need to act on each?
Well, I was going to ask that question.
You want to do it.
We can do it all at one time, we did it last time.
We've got it.
I was going to take it to the request of the chair.
Okay.
Do it.
We'll do it, I have a chair once.
We'll do them all in one motion.
Okay, so we'll go on the rest of them and then there's one motion then.
Under Stevieville Type B Economic Development Authority, reappoint Wendell Hollingsworth to place one, reappoint Casey Hogan to place three, reappoint Marion Cole to place five, appoint Lori Beatty to place four, and appoint Matt Underwood to place seven. Planning and Zoning Commission, reappoint Lisa Latouche to place three, Todd McAvoy to place seven, Bruce Delater from alternate one to place one. And to place five, we had originally put Rita Cook into place five. She has withdrawn from that, so we will have one empty position on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, reappoint Shannon Hunt to place one, Contessa Harrison to place three, Darren Trussell to place five, and reappoint Dennis Jones to place seven. For the Airport Advisory Board, to reappoint Tracy Gifford to place one, reappoint Shannon Truesdale to place three, appoint Kobe Sims to place five, and reappoint Chris Williams to place seven. Senior Citizens Advisory Board, to reappoint Cheryl Wells to place one, reappoint Judith Metter to place three, reappoint Joanna Lay to place five, and reappoint Marlene Dupas to place seven. Library Advisory Board, reappoint Joanne Phillips to place five, appoint Jeanie Schaefer to place one. Building Board, to reappoint Toby O'Neil to place one, reappoint Danny Phillips to place three, reappoint Brent Virgin to place five. Mechanical Board, to reappoint James Walker to place three, Steve Devaney to place five in reappointment. Under the Tourism Investors Bureau Advisory Board, reappoint Chelsea Brown to place one, reappoint Belle Dow to place three, serves retail, reappoint Charles Howard to place five, Tarleton representative, and appoint Tina Marchbanks to place seven representing hotels. E wrath County Appraisal District Board, to reappoint David Tomlinson as, as the representative from the city. There were no recommendations made for the Electrical Board or the Plumbing Board due to lack of response from the current members, so we will address those at a later time as we will the others. And with that, Mr. Mayor, we, I would move that we, these be approved.
You have a motion?
Second.
Second by Alan, any further discussion? See to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Chris Cook, you have several new committee members or reappointed committee members?
We do.
Anything else?
Thank you. That's it.
Tonight, Mr. McFlinton wasn't able to be here tonight, so we're going to turn that over to Monica, is that right, or to Alan?
I'll introduce it and then Monica will explain it.
It just takes more time.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on December the 29th, the Finance Committee of the City Council met to, to consider four items, the first being ambulance financial hardship application, the second Hampton Inn's request for a waiver of hotel occupancy tax penalty and interest, deferred compensation plan update and adoption agreement, and proposals for benefit consultant services. Monica Harris, our Finance Director, is here to discuss these items in detail. Ms. Harris.
For the, the items that require council approval, Hampton Inn has requested a waiver of the hotel occupancy tax penalty and interest for the quarter period ending March 31st, 2020. That report was due by April 30th, 2020. Their corporate office is out of New York, which is where they take care, the franchisee takes care of all their tax reports and payments, and that was closed due to COVID. They did get the report turned in in October of 2020, and so the 15% penalty of $3,732.31 was assessed and the interest of $1,0537.92 was assessed. The motion was made to waive the 15% penalty but require the interest payment and it passed unanimously.
I still think that we need to ask Bill de Blasio to send us some of that penalty money because he closed New York down, but that's a different issue. All right.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve, to approve that waiver of the penalty but still require the interest payment.
A motion by Justin?
Second.
Second by Brandon. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Motion passes. I still think de Blasio ought to pay us.
Would you like a motion to that effect?
I think I'm going to write him a lawsuit.
Let me know how that works out for you.
Okay, I will. Send you a copy. Good point, Alan.
The next item was the Deferred Compensation Plan update with an adoption agreement. In, with the adoption of our fiscal year 1920 budget, in the late stages, we approved a 1% match on our deferred compensation plan of the base pay for our employees. We requested proposals for retirement plan advisor. We wanted to give local agents an opportunity to put in for it. We, in November, the request was advertised, we didn't receive any proposals, and then in February, we advertised again. We had one proposal from Allen Financial Management and Empower. After reviewing our options, we decided to go ahead and continue with our current provider Nationwide and National Benefit Services. They have redid our agreement and the, the plan verbiage to show the 1%. Because it is not 100%, 1% of all, it's, it's on the base, base pay, it's considered a non-elective deferral. And all that means is that our percentage is calculated in the cap as well, which currently is not going to be any problem for any of our employees, I don't see in the very near future. So the motion was made and it was passed unanimously to approve the adoption agreement and the associated deferred compensation plan.
Any questions? Or your motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the adoption agreement with Nationwide.
A motion, Justin?
Second.
Second by Brandon. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Motion passes.
So just so that our employees know, I talked to National Benefit Services today, well Nationwide, and we will be able to start that as soon as they get the signed contract, so we probably will see we can start doing the match next pay period.
Good. Anything else? While you're here, why don't you give your financial report?
I have the benefits consultant.
One more then?
There's one more.
Okay. Consultant's training.
So in November 2020, the camp, the, the city advertised for a request for a proposal for a benefits consultant. We received two proposals, one from Finance, Financial Benefit Services, which is our current provider, and the second for Wellspring Insurance Agency. We reviewed, we, we did a follow-up questions for both of the proposers and the decision was, was made to choose Wellspring Insurance Agency. They have a proposed annual fee of $30,000 for the medical, which is 2,500 per month, plus 10% commission on all the voluntary, such as dental vision, voluntary life, AD&amp;D. This includes the online enrollment platform as well as a portal that they, that they have. This will cut our costs roughly in half of what we were paying before. I did go ahead and, and checked with two of their current cities that they use. Both of them were very pleased with the service. I asked them the type of service that they get, stuff like the, the statement, the employee compensation package statement, things of that nature that we were shooting for, and they, they did provide those services. They did advocate for their employees. And one of the cities said that they've had really bad claims to premiums ratios over the last several years, but they have kept their premiums down, I mean, at a level instead of going up because they fought for them. So both of them were very pleased and, and had nothing but good things to say, so.
Mayor, a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve, excuse me, the Financial Benefit Services contract to Wellspring Insurance Agency.
Ricky makes a motion there or a second?
Take it.
Second by Gerald. Any discussion, questions?
I would say I was in, sat in on the meeting with Mark and Monica and Alan. And this, this agency provided a pretty extensive list of municipalities that they worked with. Our, our current provider has one or two municipalities, two, I think, including us. They cater more to ISDs, so in addition to the cost savings, I think this, this agency's going to provide better service geared more towards municipalities.
We do have Mr. Dradham via Zoom if anybody has any questions for Wellsprings.
Any questions? No questions, any? I have a motion and a second, we proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now, go ahead and get your, since Mr. Sanford decided wouldn't come tonight, I'm going to give him a hard time since he's not here. Anyway, we'll go ahead and get your financial report if you would.
This is for our financial statements ending November, the second month of our fiscal year. The financial indicators are really better than, than expected, expected in a lot of cases. For our property tax, we received $318,000 in the month of November, which was $87,000 or 15.16 increase over the funds collected through last November. The $657,000 collected through November is 9.89% of budget, which is lower than the 11.25% anticipated. I imagine that is part of an impact of COVID-19, people will see some late payers. For sales tax, we received $694,000 in sales tax in November, which is $87,000 or 14.26% more than the funds collected last November. Part of this, when I looked at the analysis on it, there were some prior period collections and then there was also, I think it's about $50,000 worth of audit collections. The 1.3 million collected through November is 21.24% of the 6.23 million budgeted, which is about three and a half more, three and a half percent more than we had anticipated. For hot funds, the lodging establishments have reported $36,523.27 in hotel occupancy taxes through November. We have a few of them that haven't quite learned the monthly reporting, so we're contacting them. And then we have spent $99,000 in our hotel occupancy tax funds through November as compared to the $33,000 last year, and that's due to our day tripper contract for advertising. The target budget for our operating revenue is 4.13 million. We received 4.18 million through November, which is $47,000 over our target budget. This is a result of our sales taxes and service charges. The target budget for operating expenditures is 37, 3.76 million. We expended 3.63 million through November, resulting in $135,000 under our target budget. Our operating revenue received last year was 4.21 million. The current year is 4.18 million, which is a $30,000 decrease. Increases in our property tax, sales taxes and building permits offset most of the reductions that we had in service charges, interest on investments and other income. The operating expenditures last year were 3.9 million. The current year is 3.6, which is $276,000 decrease. Our general fund expenditures did decrease from last year by $301,000. Are there any questions?
Questions?
Is the decrease in budgeted expenditures just a timing issue or is that?
I think we've been slow to gear up, which is not that uncommon. At the start of the year, you'll start seeing the expenditures pick up, so. I wouldn't, I always tell y'all not to get excited when we see that we're under budget. We, we pretty, we start the year pretty conservatively to make sure that, that, you know, things break or whatever the case is. We always have funds and don't have to come back and ask you guys for money. So when we get closer to the end of the year, we see that we'll have funds available and then we start making sure that we get spent what we need to.
Any questions for Monica? As always, we thank you for your good report, good financial work. Next item is consent agenda, do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I approve the agenda.
Take it. Motion, second by Gerald. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, consent agenda's approved. Thomas, by city manager.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just have a few things tonight. The first day to file for a place on the May 2021 general election ballot is Wednesday, January 13th. Next month's, I'm sorry, the committee meetings for this month are January the 19th at 5:30 PM. Also, if, if I may take just a moment, last August, Jen Basham left us to, to go to another city to be their parks director. We brought a gentleman in at that time who has many, many years of experience in, in the parks and rec business. Tom Henry is retired from the city of Grand Prairie, where he served with the Parks Department there for, for many years. I just want to recognize Tom for the great job that he, that he's done for us over the last seven, eight months, six, nine months, whatever it is. Tom has been a real pleasure to work with. He's come in, he's fit with staff. He, it, his first day was like he'd been here forever and we thank him for what he did. Now, the good news is, is we get to kick Tom out the door and welcome Kelly Zatipka, who is our new Parks and Leisure Director. And, and Kelly started this week and Tom is, is filling her with notes and projects and details and I tell you what, you walk by their office and Kelly's got her notepad and she's just writing and Tom's talking. So we welcome Kelly. Tom, thank you for the great job you've done. We appreciate you and we'll miss you.
I'll add to your comment. We also have a, a work session scheduled for, you've got an agenda item tonight.
Yes.
On next Tuesday, right?
Right.
5:30, so don't forget that as well.
Oh, yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Okay, we're just going to, just get a place, we're just going to go around. Brandon?
No, I'm on it.
Brandon?
Just thank you to all that applied and serve on the boards and commissions. We appreciate you giving your time and effort to the citizens. It's, it's important and we appreciate you guys. And it's always good to be involved. Wish everyone a happy new year and thank you, Tom, for what you've done. Welcome, Kelly. And that's it.
Ricky?
Oh, hey, case in principle, that's seeing somebody seeing something and making a difference in that the 11-years-old, it's pretty incredible. So we all, we all could learn. So we all, we all could learn from that.
Exactly.
Say happy new year. There's been a lot of really great news that we could finally talk about in the last few weeks that's come out, so it's been a great start to, a lot of great news to start 2021 with. I think there'll be a lot more coming and there's a lot of effort going on right now to make some big plans to keep moving Stevensville forward in 2021.
Nick?
Gerald?
I'd have to echo some of what Ricky just said. I had commented before that the latest was Old Navy coming in and it's another win for Stevensville. You add that, we, one of the things we have got to do in looking at this project over the last year and a half or so, and knowing some of the projects that, and some of the businesses that were thinking about coming, and these were certainly some of those, that it was, it was quite exciting. And to be able to, for that to come to fruition and to be announced is just a really good thing. And you add that to the new manufacturing company that was also announced here within the last month. It's, it's going to be located out by the airport. It's just a positive thing and that's 75 new jobs in town. That means another retail store that'll be coming in with it and simply because of the wealth that'll be generated by that company and the community. These are all positive economic development advances. And in a time that we're in right now, when we get so much bad news, it's really good to have the good news and to have good news for Stevensville. We've got some bright days ahead.
Gerald, if you open the door for me, thank you. I want to echo what you said about the development that's coming and the new things that are happening, but I want to tell you, and I'll interject a little personal note, after being sick and down for a couple of weeks and my wife down, one of the reasons these people come here is because of the community, because there is a caring, involved community that reaches out to those that need help and embraces them and prays for them and encourages them in ways that you don't get in many cities. And I want to thank all the people that did that to me and my wife, but I want to tell you that that's one of the reasons we're growing is because people seek that and people look for things like that. And I appreciated that and I think that's one of the reasons Stevensville has been successful all these years is because of the people in and of the community. And that's, that goes right with what you said.
It does.
Justin? Absolutely. Great words of encouragement and exciting to be in 2021 and 2020 behind us. Kelly, welcome to Stevensville. I hope you heard some of these comments and we hope that your experience in Stevensville is the same as what we live every day. And that's it.
On, I believe it is January 12th, we'll have a new state legislator and state senator. And so welcome them to the new job. They'll have a lot to work today. I have no other comments, so it is 6:20 in the city council. I stand adjourned.